We are at a situation, a crossroads right now where we might look at suggesting a cost of replacement in its entirety for this generator. So more to come, DEC inspection. Paula Jacob, along with two of her colleagues, visited the site on the 30th for a couple hours in the afternoon. It was one of those beautiful picturesque days where we did have a nice stiff breeze coming from the east and we did have some smells that morning. We were also, the DPW crews, I think they were finishing their sewer flushing at that time. So it coincided with a neighbor complaint while the DEC officer was present. So I think we handled it okay. It was obviously coming through the front door, you know, there's not a lot we could do about that. That being said, we did have some tree work just recently performed by Arbor Care. I suggested to the owner, is there any floral trees or odiferous trees we might be able to plant that might mask some of those smells along that chain link fence, along the railroad track? And so he's going to get back with me with some options there. So it does look nice. We did clear a lot of the old cottonwoods out and all the sumac out, so you have a view of the river again. And we did have an excellent month for our sledge holding tank. We had a 1.21% solids, which is substantially higher than normal, so that's savings in my mind. Other than that, we haven't had too much occur. We did have Marshall Green celebrate his 39 year anniversary with us on the 15th, so certainly worth mentioning. But other than that, is there any questions that members of the board might have as it pertains to the report?
I don't have anything pertaining to the report, but the water replacement down at Bartlett Point, that's completely needed. So I think that's very good.
Yes, we have-
There was a marker installed down there at the end of last week at the end of the pipe. So if you see a marker out there, that means there's the end of the pipe. Please don't drive your boat over.
Find a heavy chain.
We'll hook it up in the spring.
That's correct. There's about a 40, 50 foot segment left from where they pulled the pipe in from the river that they have left to connect to the wet well. That's not going to happen until the spring when they have the screen for the intake. They're going to place the screen on at the same time.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Jones?
Hello, everyone. You all have a copy of the DPW activity report. As you can see around the village, we finished paving this week. I think since I've taken over, that's probably the most paving, micro sealing that we've done in one season. And we got a lot of streets done. And I think the only streets that I haven't paved, or since I've been the boss, is Reece Street and Steel's Point, which we got them on the hit list for next year. So hopefully, once the water main project gets done over there, we can take care of those people over there, make everybody happy, and then we'll start the cycle all over again. But everything worked out really well. There's a couple little hiccups are coming back to fix a couple of little high spots they have over here on American Union Street. The new guys did a really good job. It's the first time they ever really paved, so they got a little taste of what it's all about. And they did a very good job, everybody. I would like to mention that I know a lot of people don't really understand or know really what goes into it, but there's a lot of communication involved in all of this. And we wouldn't be able to do those kinds of things without the Town of Clayton Highway Department, Town of Orleans, Town of Cape Vincent, Town of Alexandria. Anytime we need pavement, they step up and they haul the blacktop for us with shared services. You know, we've got a great, we've got a great north country here, and we all work together very, very well. So I just want to give them all a huge coat for all the work that they do and the badge plant there out of Heidelberg. So it's a team effort and it's a lot that's involved and a lot of organizing with everybody trying to keep it, you know, going. So I think two days with the amount that we did was pretty impressive. We worked late on that Tuesday, but you know, it was well worth it. So kudos to everyone. Jake was COA Marine, was there today, came today and removed the gangways from the big docks. Door Construction will be doing, I believe, moving the little floaters over to Mary Street, either tomorrow or Wednesday or sometime during the week. So unfortunately, the season's over, and we all know what that means. And so we will start equipping trucks. We already have one ready. We'll start getting the snow blowers ready and our new truck should be here. We can get the sander on that and get that equipped. The Truck 20, the older pickup truck that's, we're going to remove the box, put the flatbed that was donated on that, get the sander on that. So we should be well equipped hopefully by the time the snow flies. Hopefully it doesn't start till February or March.
Keep thinking that way, please.
I try to be as optimistic as I can, but I know better. I think, other than that, that's really all that I have. Guys did a great job. Pumpkin Chunkin', I did want to mention that. It's the first time we've had three guys down there helping, plus the two dock staff. Fantastic job keeping up with everything because it was packed. I don't, I think that might be the most people we've ever had, as far as I can tell. Great crowd, you know, it's awesome. Clayton, Clayton's on the map and it's a pretty cool thing. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Terry?
How many pumpkins did you pick up?
I didn't pick any up, believe it or not.
Well, I don't mean you. What happens to pumpkins in the water?
I think they just-
They just-
Seagulls pick up.
Yeah, fish food.
Fish food, alright. Thank you.
I was looking at that state rack. That was really nice.
That's a nice truck.
It is.
Yep.
Did you get your plow truck back from Henderson?
No, we haven't. I'm going to call Jim tomorrow. There was a couple of leaks. I think we had talked about that. I would have thought it would have been fixed by now, but yeah, we'd like to get it here because we want to get it equipped. We don't have to equip 26 again if we don't need to because we'd like to auction that off as soon as we can.
Week starting-
The 11th of November.
11th of November.
I'll be back. That's why I came to this meeting because I won't be here next month for the meetings.
But Mark Hayes will be the supervisor. He's the current foreman right now. He'll handle all of it. So any questions, comments, we'll direct towards Mark if need be.
And what I had, he's doing a fantastic job in John's spot. Very good job. Very good job. Couldn't ask for anything better.
All righty. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You too. Thanks.
Any questions on the police report? Mr. Wilder, zoning.
Good evening, everybody. So fairly slow, but busy month in zoning. We had three zoning requests. I had a couple of variances, but we've got a shed, an extension to a shed, and a dwelling. The one extended to the shed is going to have to go to a variance. This is identified as the second item. Couple signs. Judy Jones at Webb Street putting up a one by three sign. She's a seamstress and teaches sewing to kids. So she came in, got a sign permit, and I did that. Stewart got a sign permit. We're still in discussions. They want to change some things, but they're going to change, revise existing within code right now. They're looking to have some bigger signs. So I told them, we'll talk, we'll go to variance, and we'll go from there. But so they got the ability to change the current signs out there from whatever it was to Stewart's. Alright, building permits. I've got a bunch that are pending. These are us waiting on drawings, or clarification of drawings. We've got Wilcox, who's had the zoning permit for a small dwelling on State. Miller was the shed. He's doing an extension off the back. He needs a variance as well. Strauss has got a small shed that he is putting up where there's an existing roof overhang on his garage. He's going to turn it into a work area. One I did not put on here that we are in discussions with is Stewart's. They are requesting a building permit, or we're telling them they need a building permit for the reconfiguration of the interior of the building. I believe they're putting in some freezers and moving some counters and moving some electrical. Anytime that happens, permits come in place because we need to do inspections. Not a lot of money collected. We did do- This is the modular that was put up next to Pier House. He was all fine and dandy when he got his permit, but then when somebody else tried to get a permit, he was not adjacent to him, he was not happy. So he complained, rightfully so. Elliot had brought in what they were doing or where they were going, or where they were replacing the garage, and ended up putting it five feet from the property line versus 10 feet from the property lines. So we issued them a stop work notice, said you're going to have to go to variance to get that. They were subsequently denied. So they're going to have to either dig up that foundation that they poured or build in the other direction. But that's, if they had been a little bit more forthcoming and working with us, we might have been able to do something. But it seems like the contractor did a major error and there was poor communication. They were not very pleasant to Timmons, you know, when they were driving on his lawn, his freshly seeded lawn, they're driving over with trucks, and he's trying to tell them, and they're like, well, it's your garage, we're building it for you. And he's like, no, you're not. This is what I need. So a couple other inspections we did, some framing inspections on Healy, on Washington Island, and Hall on Emory Avenue. Okay, variances, no certificates of occupancy or issued variance. Application revisited is the only way I can say. Greg Pep has got those two properties. He still wants to put his garage up on the one property where he does have a property to do it, but he doesn't have the ability to split the property because it will be going into a non-conforming lot. So I think the only thing he wants to do is go back to the board and get a final determination of a denial. He was not denied, he was tabled because we had suggested look into merging the one property where the garage would go and separate out your rental. And he got saying it was too convoluted and he wants to go back. I don't know what a denial does for him, but that's the direction I think he wants to go. So we'll entertain that. Board meetings, site plan review. We've got Mooreja Townhouses coming up. These are the two townhouses he's putting up on State Street, adjacent to the existing townhouse he has out there. He's got all of, he's got the property, he's got the land, he's got things. The only thing we're waiting on is a property line adjustment. So they've applied for it. I've got documentation that it's pending. So we are still, we're going to go to the board with a pending merger for that. But everything else is in place. I just sent out the, all of the documents, the plans, the permits, the environmental assessments, the, I've noticed to the county, since it's within 500 feet of Route 12. And I subsequently got an invitation to go to a meeting with the county tomorrow at four o'clock to discuss this project. So that's a first for me. Every time I send the referral in, it's like, okay, we get it back and there you go. And all of a sudden, something else is going on. So I'll let you know. But for Mooreja, public notice went out, near neighbors, mailings went out, the sign went up. And again, there's the planning board reviews meeting tomorrow at four. We did have a request from the planning board to readdress the laundromat. I have talked to the owner. He is putting together a landscaping plan that will be executed in March or April. And I pretty much said that was okay, as long as we keep communicating. And I start seeing paper and emails saying he's committing to this. So that's a project in disarray and in motion at the same time. But planning board's been asking about it for a couple months, and then I keep saying, I'll get to it, I'll get to it. I got to it finally.
Well, we also, excuse me, you also got a letter from them. Did you see that? We didn't show you that letter?
I may not have seen it. Who was it from?
It was from Finney's and it just wasn't in their budget. They'll let us know.
Okay, yes, I remember that conversation. Zoning Board Appeals, Elliot, the garage, the three to five variance was rejected because it was built too close to the property. So we're waiting on them. Senical Apartments, 532 James Street, the never ending expansion project. We have told him he's got no more ability to expand, that he does not have the required parking lots, criteria to meet the number of units that he has. He wants to put in nine units. He needs 18 parking spots. He's got seven units now, 14 parking spots. I don't even know if he has 14. So we have asked him to come back and give us documented drawings showing each and every parking spot, where it is, length, width, location. And so that's kind of in the wind, as we say, but it's not going, it's not going to go for approval without us really getting into it. And then we've met with the planning board, we've met with the zoning board. So it's going to have to go back to zoning because zoning is the only one who can change the code to reduce the number of parking spots. And to my knowledge, that's never been done before. So usually we would just go to the planning board. We've got 13 spots for, you know, what X number of apartments. Well, here we go. Stamp it. This time it's going to go to the board, planning board, and then, excuse me, zoning board, then planning board, if it gets past us. Okay, inquiries. Megan Caddick, garage variance that was approved back in September. She has contacted me saying she is in motion of getting updated drawings so she can build that. TIN, I had a call from the new owners. They want to meet with us on Tuesday. And we're going to discuss where we are in the entire project. We are looking at this as a standalone project by itself. New application, new request, new eyes on it and moving forward. What's happened in the past, I don't know. I don't care. Alright, we're going to, we're going to follow what we are doing for the village. We've developed a good program, we're sticking with it, and they're going to be funneled right through it. Where it goes, we don't know.
Who's the new owners?
Pardon me?
Who is the new owners?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. I've spoken to them a couple times briefly. I will know tomorrow when they call me to arrange the meeting.
That's gone through?
Yes.
Yes.
Purchase.
Yep, the purchase is going through. So let's see, notifications none, complaints, the abandoned boats, abandoned U-Haul truck. We have tabled that. Okay, I come every month saying, oh, we're going to get this done, we're going to get this done. We've been talking about what we need to do with this and the next item, snow removal. Okay? Where we have to develop a program. We have to then convey that program to the public. And it's going to be through a series of, potentially of meetings, newspaper, publications, not quite sure what else, but that's something in progress. And I think we're going to do that for both of those types of items because they're going to impact our community positively and negatively. So we, in my mind, we need to give them a window of response to proposals, and then we will address response to comments, and then we will issue a final, you know, edict. You know, we've answered all these question folders, okay? For the abandoned boats, trailers, and U-Haul trucks, and all that other stuff. And snow removal, which is a big issue for Terry. Terry can't get his job done without us doing that. So if, and when you see this come through, because I am going to ask the board to approve it probably in two weeks for the snow removal letter that we're going to publish. So it's going to come to you guys, and I'm going to need you to read it, approve it, and so we can publish it.
You'll email it in advance?
Yep.
Because I think as everyone's aware, what's happened in the past, and what happened, all it ever did is just numerous cars that just never moved. So then they began to be plowed in, and that still didn't make a change. So as Dave was saying, what we're looking to do, and there's a lot of pieces to that, is, you know, you need to, your car is going to be towed.
And we're going to tow them.
And that is going to be your responsibility to get it and pay for the whole thing. It won't be anything on the village, it won't be done. We will contract it out when it all gets put together. But I agree with this because you see downtown, the people know this is nothing new. It's nothing new in any community. They just leave their vehicles there.
Because nothing's going to happen.
Right, that's correct.
So do we need to do a formal ordinance or something?
Well, we're looking into all of this. It's not-
And if we did, there'd probably be a public comment part.
Yes.
Possibly.
That's right. I'm envisioning it.
There's a lot of moving pieces to it. It's not just-
And it's got to be done soon.
Well, and it makes sense. It makes sense.
And October.
It's like you have something, but there's no teeth to it.
That's correct.
And it's really nothing. And I like the idea of towing because towing is a thing that, you know, guess what? I mean, you got to pay for the tow right off the bat.
Your car back, you got to go-
It has nothing to do with us. You were not where you're supposed to be. We called the tow truck, likely said we do it, and now your car's gone.
So who would have the towing contract for the village?
Oh, we're not going to make that public yet. We have someone in mind.
My concern is, there was a time when the laundromat was a mobile station, and that person had the towing contract for the village. And he said, if it's one of my customers, I'm not towing them.
It would not, I guarantee it will not be the same person. We have a different person.
Well, he's not a business anymore, so I'm just suggesting that if it's someone local, we may face the same issue.
If the person we're thinking of, he'll tow them.
Yep. Alright, final thing on the agenda is French Creek. They have started utility construction installation for the tiny home lot that was coordinated with Terry for the tie-ins for the existing electric and sewer. They are about to go to construction on several pads. And so I have contact at Hines. I told him that we need some type of construction schedule. So we have the ability to look at plans, specs, permits, and inspections. He may do two or three at a time, he may do six, I don't know, but we need to have that. So we're meeting with him this week. Each of those, though, will be an individual unit and an individual permit. So we're not, you know, one idea was just to, you've got 24 permits, or 24, you've got 24 lots, you can build on those. No. Because it may be two years down the road before they get to 22 and 23 and 24. So we want to, and then we all know things can change. Again, utilities was done with Terry, and building permits, we're in discussion on those. Okay, that is sweet and brief. Yes, questions?
So the tiny homes, each of them will be hooked up to water and sewer, and they will pay water and sewer and all of that separately, not part of-
I'm not quite sure how Hines is doing that.
Well, isn't that our decision?
No.
No.
No, it's not our decision, and I could be incorrect. I think he will take care of the water and sewer, but he will be billed for all of them at one time. I don't think there's going to be separate meters, but I could be wrong about that.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find that out, yes. Because right now, the current homes don't have separate meters, or the trailer park. They don't, they don't have that. Just one bill goes to him, and he takes care of it accordingly.
So how about this U-Haul truck? There is an ID plate from U-Haul on it, right? So have we contacted U-Haul?
I believe it's privately owned.
It's been sitting there for numerous years.
It's privately owned. We've contacted the owner before, and we've gotten, I'll take care of it, I'll take care of it, I'll take care of it. And they don't take care of it.
It uses storage-
It's got tables or chairs in it or something like that.
By one of the local restaurants. This is nothing new.
I get complaints every month about that trailer.
Oh, I get it. Right after you, I get it.
Yeah.
It's a trailer or a truck?
It's a truck.
Yeah.
So they should just get a permit for a storage shed and put the tables and chairs in there.
That would be nice, yes.
Alright, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. In reference to Mike, Mike is now taking his fifth course for codes, and he'll take one more class in November, I believe. And then he will be fully certified. But he's passed every single one of them.
He's moved on quick.
Oh, he's moved, yeah, he's, yes. He's done a great job for us. He's done a great job. Well, let's see, our favorite part, the consent agenda, number one through five. Do we have any comments or questions? And if not, can I have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
In a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And a motion to accept the capital projects, number six.
Make the motion.
In a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Joanne?
Just wanted to put in there, for your knowledge, water bills, the ad for the TI Sun, what we put in there, and then the back of the water bills. We always put the sidewalk snow removal requirements or reminders, which parking regulations and block advisory. Just putting the reaction you guys to, no, you don't have to motion it.
I make a motion, not to motion.
Okay, let's see, I just have a lot of things to say, nothing huge. As we all know, Pumpkin Chunkin' was a great success. I want to thank Ryman's Decorating and St. Lawrence Gallery. They have painted their buildings and they look much, much nicer. Mars, I noticed today, is starting to remove signs and paint. That will become direct subs sometime in the spring.
Sweet.
Sweet. As Dave talked about Stewart's, they should be having their freezers in two to three weeks for ice cream, which everybody's excited about. Friday was the dedication of the storybook trail to Mary Zobastaski. I saw trustee Redock there with all those cute little children. We all got ice cream afterwards, but it was a very nice program, very nice. And I would also like to publicly thank the town for their giving us some- And I would also like to publicly thank the town for their giving us some money from their bed tax for our, that will go towards the chamber. And that was very, very kind of them to do. As you see, we didn't have a joint meeting today because neither sign had anything to put on the agenda. We'll move that along. And Thursday, tilt Business With a Twist at five o'clock. And let's see, the Christmas tree lighting will be December the 4th. Thanksgiving's light this year. Christmas tree, Christmas parade is December the 6th. That's all I have. Do you have anything trustee Kenny?
I do not.
Trustee McDowell?
Well, it just wouldn't be a board meeting if I didn't bring up that we have a no parking sign hanging on our, on our, on our Riverwalk and I'm kind of wondering, Mayor, when it's going to come down. We've been talking about this for two months.
If you'd like to stay it after for an executive session, I'll be more than happy to explain it. There's some legal issues involved with it and I don't want to explain it in a public meeting, but I have answers for you. Anything else?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Riddock?
No.
Trustee Dooford?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peterson, no, Mr. Paul Frickman, Mr. Frickman, do you have anything to?
And, and this is pretty much a minor issue, but I, I have a tendency that I always want to do drive-bys when I'm in town. And I go by O'Brien's to pick up a friend and that DJ always parks his car and trailer on the side of the street where there's no parking. I actually took a picture of it and you can see the no parking sign and he's parked right next to O'Brien's. I talked to the policeman once about saying something to him. I, I saw Buffy the other day and I didn't say anything to her, but you know, we have these laws and regulations and he does it continuously, all the time. And I'd be glad to say something to him, but I just didn't know if there was some other means to be nice to the guy and park his trailer and car off that street because when he's parked there, you have to go on the other side of the street to get around. And so if it's busy down there like it was Saturday night, you had to wait before you could pass around his vehicle. So, you know, I'm just thinking that, and I, I mentioned it to Mary Ryman, Heyman, and she said, yeah, they need to adhere to the rules. And then I didn't mention her truck that was, you know, parked on the side there. But yeah, just an observation, it just, you know, they need to follow the rules like everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
In a second?
I know.
You can work on the people.
Fine.
Yeah.
So it's not like they're going to make a decision?
No.